I feel like I should sing a song or something, but here we go. Notice is hereby given pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. The City of Smithville will conduct a special call meeting on September twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five, at two P M. in the Council Chambers of City Hall, three-one-seven Main Street, Smithville, Texas. That reminds me, I need to silence stop them. First thing on the agenda, um, call the meeting to order. And, uh, we're going to go into a closed meeting, uh, at this moment. The City Council will hold an executive session pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551, and a parties with the authority contained in Section 551, oh, seven-four, to discuss personal interim city manager's employment. And we'll go into closed session at two o'clock.
Two o'clock.
Here we go. Yes, we're gonna come back here, we're gonna go interview a young man, then we're coming back here. Okay, here we go. Back into the open meeting, no action taken on the closed meeting, and the time is four-oh-eight. So we go back to item two, discussion and action on archiving expenditures from tax note per ordinance, twenty-twenty-five, six-nine-seven.
Okay, Council Mayor, we, we're adding this to any meeting that might come up in the future in case there's something that might come up in the future of major, um, authorization. So there was no action on this one to date.
No action. Next item, discussion and action regarding on-demand leaf and, uh, take it away.
I just got the quick one, it's not gonna take long enough. Uh, I've been getting a lot of, uh, I've been listening to the citizens and stuff, and I've been talking to the ladies up here at the front, everything, and there's a lot of movement steps going on, and I know we approved to go, you know, to the on-demand system and everything, but I just wanted to go through a couple slides real quick and then give you a recommendation what I think we should do. Just a little bit, and that's fine, and this is, uh, this is our route system right here, right now that we work on daily. This is where my guys, all leaf and limb guys, go through and, and they do the routes, pick up leaves, limbs, and everything. Next slide, that's us again. Hey, I'm not the shortest one in the picture. But this is my leaf and limb guys right here today, and their supervisor, I just put this together, go ahead. Couple things, everybody knows our brush dump is closed to the public now, so everything that goes through comes through us. Again, y'all understand how much it costs to tub ride and everything, so we're trying to chip up and cut and, you know, get everything down so that way we don't have to spend a lot of time doing stuff, but the problem we have out here with these things is these piles. Keep them separated, keep them nice and neatly and orderly piled so that it's convenient for us to pick up. Not over five foot long, not over seventy-five pounds where we can't pick it up. And this is all on the internet, this is all on the city websites, all in our ordinance. It's out there for the public to see, and they know that. Next slide. Same thing, this is just pretty much talking about our ordinance, about picking up limbs and stuff, blah, blah, blah. Door knockers, if it's not right, I actually found these stashed somewhere, and they're old, they need to be updated a little bit, but if we find piles that aren't the same size or whatever, we need to put them out there so people know about this. Next slide. Waste management, here we go. This is the thing that I got, and I've gotten a lot of feedback from and stuff. Waste management will take leaves and limbs, but, but nobody knows, it's one time a month. Once a month, waste management will pick up your leaves and limbs, and it's on the bulk pickup days, which is the last week of the month. Plus, you see the piles at the, at the bottom left, how they have the little li- uh, limb piles? That's how they have to look to be picked up. They do not look like that when we're out there. Leaves have to be in bags, and they have to be, you know, put out to be picked up and stuff, so I know a lot of people say, hey, we can, you know, get waste management to help us pick this up, but once a month, that's, it's kinda hard to do. Next slide. Some pros and cons, we kinda wrote up for the on-demand and as-is, if we left it the way we, we do, you know, and stuff right now. You know, with the on-demand, it's gonna be less, to me, I feel like we're gonna have a less little time running the chippers and the leaf trucks and stuff like that, so our maintenance will might go down, you know, wear and tear on the vehicles and stuff like that. Uh, but if we stay as-is, they're running five days a week, eight hours a day. Different things on revenue, it's, and stuff like this, and we can read through all of this, we can get this sent to y'all. I couldn't send it today because the internet was down, I was trying to get this to y'all to read it. Some pros and cons and stuff in that, but next slide's gonna take care of the end of it. This is my recommendation, talking to everybody. I say, yes, we've talked about keeping, yeah, we hit the button, there you go. Uh, we'll keep the on-demand, but I recommend that maybe we delay this for a little while due to, we're having a lot of issues with Tyler technology and the, help me out, Robert, D W G R four-four-nine, B R five-four-nine, or some E R Ps, C R P versions. It's all in crazy letters, and I, I kinda know what they are, I've read them, but I just, I can't even remember all of them, but
D two eighteen.
So we're having a lot of issues. One thing that came through was, we've never really sat down and actually had a process of how this is gonna work on demand. And that's what a lot of the, the citizens are asking, you know, and stuff, how's this gonna work? And we've talked about that, but, you know, to, to build them and stuff like this, our techno- our stuff up front is not working well. We're fixing to have the new solid waste contract come in, up to date on January first, and it's gonna run through March. So I've just, like I said, my recommendation is maybe we just keep it the way it is for right now, and let's get through all of this and get through the R P and see if the tech- technology comes up, if it comes up to date and everything, see what the contract says. At least we know we got revenue coming in, and we can take care of these alleys. Because right now, everybody thinks that this is starting October first, our alleys are horrible. They have got limbs and limbs and limbs everywhere stacked in the deal. And it's kind of, uh, it's kind of affecting the waste management guys, they can't get in and service the trash. Um, electrical guys, if any outages happen or whatever, we're having trouble getting in the alleys and stuff because there's just brush everywhere, so just something to think about, that's my recommendation, that's where I would like to go with it. Um, I don't know if that could happen or not, but something to think about. Do you make any questions?
I have a question, please. How often are, you're saying it happens pretty often where, uh, the, the piles and the limbs aren't, aren't conforming to what the requirements are, and so you leave one of those, uh, notes on, on the door, on the door?
We've never, actually, we haven't lately because we didn't know we had the door knockers and we found them, so we would like make notes to them and stuff, and when they would finally call in and say, hey, we saw a chopper drive by, how come they didn't pick up our brush? And we would tell them, hey, it's gonna be a paid pickup now because of the way y'all have it stashed, or you got limbs and leaves mixed together, or rocks in the pile, or tree stuffs. If you separate it all, we'll come back and we'll pick it up. But it has to abide by the rules for us to pick up everything. And it's quite often, I mean, that's pretty a normal pickup right there, whatever, and they've got it kinda stacked nice and neat, they can pick it up, they can We're supposed to spend fifteen minutes per household picking up leaves and limbs on the day of the route date.
That's a lot, that's a, that's a big amount.
And that's a lot, that's a lot of time, but, I mean, if you think about, if you had to stop at every house on that route date, everybody put out a pile of limbs or pile of leaves, it would, it would make it a whole day in a time, but
Okay, thank you.
Brad, do you have any questions?
I'm gonna ask a blunt question.
There.
Because I'm pretty sure we spoke about processes at another time during this discussion. Why was this proposed if there wasn't feasibility of the process thought through? How do you understand the cost of what it would take?
And I think what happened, you know, when we were sitting down and we kinda decided, you know, the, the fifteen dollars for a normal pickup to the figure time, but I don't think we've ever decided like, or I, and maybe I missed this, maybe I, I slept a couple days since then, not much, but who decides to go out there and to say, hey, this is a normal pickup, this is a bulk pickup, this is more, is that my guys, is that my supervisor, you know, I don't know, we, I mean, we kinda went through the process, me and Robert talked about this quite a bit, but I don't know if I've ever proposed it to here. And like I said, the only problem I'm worried about is if we take this back and I go save by your house and I pick up your limbs and I charge you fifteen bucks, am I gonna be able to get it on to our technology to charge you for it? That, I don't know. I just know they're having way, way many troubles with this new, and like, I think they went through a whole class and got it all run for running, and it just froze and went down, they had to start all over, so
Was there a mechanism through C click fix to request that can then be raised, processed through the process? And maybe not just, uh, needed to be remitted or applied to use, or
Yes.
Let me give some additional clarity, during our budget workshops, we did talk about the process, and he actually did benchmarking for two, three months about the number of pickups that they actually do and the seasonality of those pickups, whether it's limbs or leaves. Right now, it's limbs, but the fall is coming, it will be leaves. He was doing seventy-five, you know, fifty to seventy-five a day.
A day, yeah.
Um, and so we were very concerned that when we threw up numbers for the budget, we're saving forty-five, you know, probably thirty to forty-five a day at fifteen dollars, which is a normal pile of leaves, which is hard to envision with four cubic feet in, it's basically the back of a pickup truck plus some. Uh, obviously, this would, that would, that would qualify. If you have bring equipment out or anything else, it was going to be evaluated as either a large load or an extra-large load. The process of which we discussed was it would take seven days from the time that you submitted a C click fix, or you called City Hall to have the City Hall ladies put in a C click fix, and that would get the work order to, uh, Edward. And all of our C click fixes, the categories are, they get sent to the department personnel responsible, whether it's code enforcement, electric, or leaf and limb. So that was the, the theory in process, but with, about the process. But there was questions, you know, citizens commented, we don't wanna do this, we like it the way it is, and we're not sure, and you know there's not gonna be a, like, the recycling center. There was reticence or hesitance on people to use it because it, it costs a bunch, you didn't have a bunch of, of membership cards at first, but when people got used to it, they started using it. Fast forward, complication with the E R P C R N system, uh, we're having some issues with it at, at this point, and they're working through those issues. But if you add that coupled with the number of work orders that could possibly come through, which would be thirty-five to forty,
Correct.
Uh, it's gonna overwhelm the, the ladies. And so as you're going to redo the solid waste contract, you can negotiate or, 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 or make a contract that addresses maybe it's twice a, twice a, a month leave of the pickup, that's a decision that has to be made later. But our theory was, okay, leave it the way it is, and the reason we even brought this up was because there were some people in town that are paying ten dollars and never use it. That wasn't, that's prepared, but now, as we had these meetings and you heard input from citizens, um, I think it's fifty-fifty, half don't want to go to on-demand, the other half wanna keep the way, the way it is. And so whatever is proposing, okay, let's just give us six months or four months, and, and let's keep it the way it is, and then reevaluate as part of the solid waste contract until we can refine the process and make sure the system works and can accommodate the request.
Exactly.
That was a long explanation, I'm sorry.
Alright, thank you.
I had to be careful about what I saw.
No, no, I got you.
Well, I, I wanna, I need to just, I have a conflict on the solid waste side, I'm steering clear of that conversation. Uh, and I'm only gonna be talking about leaf and limb. Uh, but with leaf and limb, this is a lot of the reason why we were able to, to explain the revenue bond was because we've already removed the ten-dollar leaf and limb fee from the utility bills. And we've added a fee for the revenue bond for the wastewater treatment facility. Um, that's six dollars and some change. I understand that it's a large workload. I just felt that this was figured out before, before it was proposed, this is where I'm at.
And I think when we started all this, it kinda was, but again, with the new technology and everything that we're having up front and stuff, I just don't want anything to mislead to the citizens out in the, out in the field or whatever, when they wonder why they're getting charged or not getting charged, and eventually it comes, catches up to us if we do, and they get like five charges at one time or something. I don't know, I don't work that side of it, I can do my side. This is just me listening to them and talking with ladies up front and then with the citizens out there, again, fifty-fifty, some want it, some don't. But I just wanna make sure, and I, again, this is my recommendation, all in mind, not saying, you know, we, you're good to go with whatever happens. We're gonna do whatever happens, I'm just wanting to make sure I got everything out there in the field to, for everybody to know.
Edward, have they, uh, what you're saying is, is because everybody's looking for this to start October first, they filled up every alley with every leaf and limb and everything else they can get, so you kinda run over what's up?
In my, and, and overload for my guys, I'm not worried about, we're gonna pick it up anywhere or whatever, but come October first, and we're gonna, if we go on the, on-demand, it's gonna be, hey, if you got limbs out there, you're getting charged for it that day, whether they've been out there a week or so, you know, because we're trying to keep up and keep up with everything. But if we run and we, it weren't, excuse me, let me rephrase that, we will not pick up the limbs until work orders put in for them to come be picked up. Sorry.
Thank you.
And if they're not there and there's no work order on them, then there'll be, it's, if you look, there was a, a slide in there that says it's the residents' responsibility to remove them if the city doesn't pick them up.
So it is, it sounds to me like we've got an education problem.
Very much.
I mean, the decision was made, if, if the community's fifty-fifty, we've made this decision, somehow we're talking about delaying it because we need time to educate, and then secondly, I don't know the impact on the budget, I guess. Did you guys take a look at that?
Certainly, uh, the sixteen-hundred-some-odd, uh, customers was two-hundred-and-one-thousand dollars. The, uh, estimated, uh, revenue from leaf and limb and the large loads was two-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand dollars, so there's a twenty-thousand-dollar difference. Um, and again, it's, education is a part of it, but the other part is the ability to bill. We're having problems getting the bills run over. Uh, Edward can do it, his guys are gonna do it one
And we can pick up our sets of these for them.
But yeah, so it's a twenty-thousand-dollar, uh, uh, delta from what he estimated versus what we have now, uh, assuming no other customers come on board.
But you're saying we don't have the, we don't have good faith in our ability to bill for it anyway, if it was, so
That's the issue with, uh, and Jennifer, you corrected, I'm wrong, with the, the ability for the girls, the ladies to actually, uh, get the fee into the bill, maybe a problem given the current issues with S T W and Tyler.
I'm not, I'm not positive, but I think, um, I mean, we just need to make a, a code, if, if it was my understanding. Um, I think the bigger issue is the forty, thirty to thirty-five to forty people calling and making these work orders is gonna be overwhelming while they're trying to learn an E R P system. So that, that's more of the, the issue, they'll be able to do it, it's just gonna be overwhelming.
I know when the city of Boston first introduced their, um, their leaf bagging, this was probably fifteen years ago at least, they partnered with other stores, local stores, whatnot, to, to sell stickers that you would apply to the bag. Is there some sort of mechanism where we can get a tag that can be applied to a brush pile or a sticker that can be applied to the back of leaves, et cetera, that can be an easier transaction that requires people to come to the City Hall? Um, hours are much greater than I thought they were, but having mechanisms like that, then at that time, they place a photo in C click fix with that tag visible, so it's just as an easier transaction, easier verification of your team?
There's plenty of stuff out there, I mean, yeah, we could put, get the cameras or whatever, if it's a, and like, C click fix is great. And like I said, the educational part is an issue we're having with them, because I've gone through numerous people throughout the city, and we have a route date as we're working now, and you know that your route date is Tuesday. Put your limbs out, put your leaves out, we'll come pick them up, no problems. They still wanna put in work orders, or they wanna call City Hall, and they're like, hey, Tracy, put us in a work order, pick up my limbs. We already know we're gonna pick up your limbs on Tuesday, that's our, our route date. The only reason you should do C click fix for a work order to pick up limbs is if we're not picking them up, or they've got out there, nobody's been there for a week or two, what's going on, you know, help me out, but if you have a regular work day, they should know that their limbs are being picked up. So, but they, I still have the same people every day, pick up my limbs, please, pick up my limbs, please, pick up my limbs.
For me personally, I have to use C click fix, I've never once, and I'll, I'll wait for weeks, I've never once had mine.
And that's what I need to know, because that's where I go back and I'll run my reports, and I'll find out why are people putting in that you ain't been out there two or three weeks? And again, I justify to my guys, we go and look at it, uh, me and my supervisor will go and look and say, hey, was this a pickup pile that's too big? It wasn't, of course, we don't really have the door knockers to put out and say, hey, your pile's not right, we can't pick it up, you know, so we wait for you to call in. But on normal days, they should be going through there picking it up every day. And we, we do, we put lots and lots of photos on C click fix, that's what, that's what it's designed for. Uh, that's what we were taught to use, and, and all my supervisors, they, they installed a lot of photos on C click fix, so you can always go back and look at that.
While we're discussing this, I, I, it's a question I was gonna ask you at another time, but I'll ask you here because it's come up. I had a citizen come knock on my door, and another one called me in the street. So when we get this implemented, and people decide, well, I'm just gonna go dump my stuff in the alley anyway, so that you were talking about, we're gonna rely on what to
So if they go and dump their stuff in an alley, and they don't call in or put in a C click fix, it's gonna sit there, and then
But, but the people who live there are gonna pay the price of having stuff not getting picked up, and it's not their stuff? That, that's the point that's been brought up to me, how do we enforce it? Something comes in an alley because they, they don't wanna call in a
Oh, yeah, so we dump it in somebody else's alley, yes. And then it's gonna be, it's gonna be the, the residents that lives there responsibility to take care of paying for that later, because I don't know who's doing it in alley.
So that's, I, we would need to think about a way, whether, uh, I don't know how to deal with that, but because I was directly approached about this, what are you gonna do with the people who we know are gonna do this, that come dump in our alley? And then I, as the resident who have the house right there, I'm gonna get, be responsible, I'm gonna have to pay to get this picked up. So it's probably something we need to address later, I don't wanna make it an issue.
No, and, and you're exactly right, because that happens now, since we've closed the brush dump to the public, people are ready to throw brush in the alleys that they're not, it's not their place, that already happens.
And we've been thinking that that
Yeah, we just go through there.
That we're not, that we're not gonna be doing that anymore.
That's correct.
We've evaluated moving towards a quarterly bulk pickup.
Yeah, I mean, we're game for anything for, for leaf and limbs or, or sofas and refrigerators and shelves.
No, I mean, like, leaf and limb, and this, cause I, I know other cities, it isn't an on-demand, or not, it, it isn't a weekly service. And, and so I just wonder, I mean, I, I've looked at places where it was basically in the spring and the fall, um, you would have a leaf and limb pickup that was just scheduled, and it was intensive pickup for those couple days, and other than that, it was
So just a catch-all in the, twice a year?
So what do they do the other times of the year when a limb falls in the backyard and they've cut it up, and do they just hold on to it till that day, or?
They can do that, they can, you know, put it in, trash it that's compliant, or they'll call tree service.
Brad, if I heard you correctly, what you were saying was, the people could put the stuff in the alley, come downtown and pay for it, and give a slip to put on it, so you're trying to take it, and then they would put it on C click fix. So you're taking it out of them having to enter it, because they're, all they're gonna do is give the slip to the person and they go out and do it, but they'd have to have a picture of how much they had, uh, so that the, the girls up top could go, okay, that's it, that's what you're saying. So you're trying to keep it out of the, of the E R P and everything.
And also just simplify the transaction, and it also gives the, the, the office staff the ability to say, hey, no, we, we need you to come in to do that, to fill this out, and
Once, the one thing I have to, to say about that is, there are people, number one, that are gonna say, no, I'm not coming downtown, I'm just doing click fix and do that. So we're, we're still not, you know, there, it, it's gonna be a mess.
And a lot of the thing other with that, because this happened to us with the trash dump around our yard, uh, they, the people now, they come to the City Hall, show them their trash, they pay for it, they bring it to our warehouse, and they dump it. And we just get a little paper receipt showing that they paid for something. A guy came one day, twenty-dollar pickup load full of stuff, and that was all, we didn't know no better, they paid. Next thing, we knew we had a boat and a trailer and half a R V in the dumpster, and we're like, what happened to the guy? After he paid, went home and picked up the boat and the trailer and everything, and brought it up there and threw it in the dumpster. Wow. And I, I called Tracy, I was like, uh, did he pay for all of this? And they're like, no, we literally had to go chase him down, we knew who he was, and made him come back and we were gonna pull him out of the dumpster, and he did, because the way he put it in there wasn't feasible for us, so that's one thing that worries me with that thing, is they're gonna come down with a picture of a little small pile, and they're gonna pay their fifteen dollars, and then they're gonna say, alright, come on, bitch, throw your stuff out here, let's go, they're coming to get it, man, next thing the pile's gonna be as big as this one.
Yeah, alright.
And it will happen.
Sounds like you used to be working.
Yeah, so, well, maybe we can table all of that for further discussion as we flesh out the program, I'm not sure what we're being asked to do right now.
Or being asked just to extend it for a few months till we get the E R P system and all the systems up to date that they've been working on diligently, trying to learn new things.
So the impact on the budget to revenue is give or take.
It's just a few months, and we've already, so we'll come back and visit it after.
That's not entirely true, because the, the fees are changed, and so we would have to repass the old fee in order to be able to clean up the technology.
I didn't know.
Yeah, we did a master fee schedule.
I know, but we just have to, that's what the motion, what are we going to do?
Or we have to have a separate motion on another day to add the fee back into the master fee schedule?
But no, no, we can, can't we just add it back into it? Now we have to have another meeting?
Well, it, it doesn't take a bit till October first, so, um, we, you can, it's not, it's not, the resolution to amend the master fee schedule is not on the agenda, but we can bring it back in October, October.
Let me throw a scenario, again, just thinking out loud here, you already got the fee removed. Uh, we're supposed to go to on-demand on October first, could going to on-demand be postponed to November? Let's catch up with all the leaves and remember where you picked it up. Don't put the fee on, just delay the on-demand, you got leaves to pick up regardless. Uh, that way, there's not, not a huge budget yet, the citizens already take their, get the ten dollar in the pit, it's just an idea to get us over this hump. Or just streamline the process.
So again, position as buffer, Republican awareness time, but I think that if your team can actually provide pictures of acceptable uses to give the front office staff, this is what it is, and, and measurement, I mean, waste management is a great example of how tidy it needs to be. And if you have examples that are very tidy like that, I think it's, it allows them a cover to not have to argue with anyone, which I think they really, they appreciate, I would imagine.
So are you saying that you're okay with delaying the implementation of the leaf and, the on-demand leaf and limb until November first?
For educational purposes?
I think that the, there should be a transitional period, there's gonna be some cleanup. I can tell you there's gonna be a lot of backlash for the people that are trying to be sneaky and whatever in the, in this month, and that, well, I had it in there yesterday, not today.
I'm thinking That's what I'm thinking, and, and I wanna be realistic about this, and we do have a need for education. Uh, we clearly have technical difficulties in being able to get it implemented in-house, so, um, I'm asking, if we're gonna do this, we might as well delay till December first.
I would say that the door knockers to get replaced, and if there is one that is a violation, should go ahead and start where we're going to be enforcing this December first.
We're sorry.
You, you want to make a motion? Yeah, hold, hold on, but just so you know, the impact is sixteen thousand four hundred and seventy dollars a month, because you're not gonna be charging, I understand that you're not charging everyone ten dollars, you're just gonna leave it at that.
So we're losing thirty-two thousand.
You would lose thirty-two thousand because you're not charging, if that's what
That's a game changer for me.
And you can change the rate.
Yeah, you can change rate, too.
We can trade October, we're billing, um, September, we don't bill for October until the end of October, you, we've got time to implement that fee back into the fee schedule.
So we don't, we don't, we delay implementation of leaf and limb until December first, and then we come back in the October council meeting and make a change to the fee schedule?
To add that ten dollars back in, you're delaying the, the on-demand, but you're adding the ten dollars back in.
So it's gonna be two fees?
Yeah, for one, for, for, for October, November.
It's good because it leaves, you know, you're gonna have most leaves in the fall.
Oh, yeah.
And, and maybe we can get it all caught up and then do something in December, go to On Demand. I think that's pretty sound. I don't think it'll make too many people mad, but.
We won't lose the fee because we're gonna implement it in, in the October, so it'll come out in the end of October bill. We implemented it on, on the October, uh, deal, but we go ahead and continue with it, cause it's already gonna be on the September bill. Okay, to make sure that we're all clear on that, you're saying that by going through whatever process we described and we'll get that worked out in a motion, that we're not going to lose any of it?
That is correct.
What about the people that are starting to comply with the work order? Or, or this is probably the wrong word, but complying with the On Demand pickup? How do we account for, if we're charging the ten dollar fee, how do we start to account for getting them to shift over to that new process?
That will be like, like, so I think what we've talked about, you know, just educating them for the next couple of months, saying, "Hey, we didn't implement it October first, we're gonna wait till December first." We're still gonna get the ten dollars from them each month, so they're gonna pay twenty bucks for the next couple of months, and then hopefully by the end, the change, the rollover, maybe everything will be sorted, a little bit more educated to these people, bam, let's go with On Demand.
So what's the education look like, other than on the website or something?
And that's the thing, you're gonna have to get them. So what I started doing too, on a lot of the C Click Fix orders that I get for leaf and limb, I've been adding, well, I've been doing this now, not for the On Demand, but I've been adding, "Hey, you have a route date, your route date is this day, put the, the, the app on there for them." So they know that, I'm like, "You don't have to send me a, a deal." So, you know, maybe it's something like, "Hey, when I get a C Click Fix, starting December first, or whatever we decide at that time, you won't be, you'll be having to put in this work order daily, educate them, tell them this is the way it has to be, this one's gotta look like." Like, uh, Brandon said, have a picture of what a normal leaf pile, normal limb pile looks like for fifty bucks, what it has to be.
I, I think that'd be good, I also think we need to, uh, uh, make sure that it is on Facebook, the city website. Yeah, BlackStud.
They also have their press years, yeah.
Yeah.
And we can help, uh, direct people to there and hopefully they'll, um, sign up and become a member and be able to get information like this and get them on the, on the Seattle app.
Yeah, if you wanna do a video or something, I'm happy to do that with you, get it out on.
We can do that, too. Now, I wanna repeat that so people heard, I, I think the Smithville Texas News is, is just volunteered to help with the production of a video so that we can include that in the education.
Yeah, I'm ha- happy to do that.
And in reality, also, they, they make some folks mad because they, they don't use it, they're getting charged again, but the people who do use it are now getting a five dollar discount at what you call a special. It's now ten, now fifteen, so that's all we're gonna do, so.
That's true. Only if you use it once on the On Demand, it's fifty bucks, if you use it ten times throughout the whole month, it's ten dollars, so you're gonna save a lot of money. Those, you know, the six...
Hundred fifty versus ten.
Yeah, I'm gonna be busy for ten.
Oh, we're, yeah, we, we started trying and we, it's, it's, it was tough, but we're making it, we're gonna do it.
Okay, there are lots of things have to go into here.
Okay, so the motion, I think, should be, we are going to delay the implementation of the leaf and limb On Demand until December, with the caveat that at the October meeting, we re-implement it on the master fee schedule, so that gets it on the master fee. Because of education, implementation, and, uh, changeover of systems.
I'm sorry, I should just, are you going to be in next week, cause it could be on next week's?
No, we're going...
No, we're not.
Fair enough.
No, we're going to our, our October meeting. Okay, so there's the motion, did everybody hear the motion?
Because of education and what?
Technical difficulty. Technical difficulty. So there's the motion on September.
No, I'm just saying, Jennifer Kim, can you reread that, did you really write?
Um, delay till December with the caveat that in October, we re-implement on the master fee schedule, the ten dollars, because of the, because of education and technical difficulty.
And technical difficulties. I can second that.
Okay, we got a motion, I got my mic on, motion second, all in favor. I'm two, Ed, Brandon, where are you? Did you vote?
He's, he's going, go ahead.
Okay. Okay, so...
No, I'm not abstaining.
You're not voting?
Okay, so four is four.
The question has been...
That is the, is the, all, all in favor?
All in favor.
All in favor?
Is it Tom?
There are four.
All right, opposed? Okay, sorry. Kathy was cutting your view. All right, so Jennifer, are you good? Edward, thank you for all the information.
I appreciate it.
And... And with that, I think we're adjourned.